Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Port Clinton City Council, June 24th, 2014. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the Lord's Prayer in a moment of silence for our men and women sitting over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. It is to stay our daily bread, and we will so trespass, as we forgive those whom trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but to the growth of evil; for thus the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever.
Mike Snyder?
Present.
Ron Ackerman, excused. Lisa Sardi, present. Gabe Belo?
Present.
Jerry Trolle?
Present.
Nicole Difridas?
Present.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Thank you. Council has before you the minutes of the special -- thank you. At the minutes for the special meeting of May 20th, but I have the motion to accept those minutes as presented. Thank you, Ms. Sardi. I have a second. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The chair notification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. And tonight, we have a presentation from Eric Peterson as the Commander of the Elks. Is that what your title is?
Yeah. Grand Hoobah, whatever you want to call it.
That's what I was going to say, the Grand Hoobah, but I didn't know that wasn't quite right.
Going through the chairs of the Elks, though, I did realize that, you know, there are grants available to help the community, and we're just trying to get our name out here. I do this off-city time, just to let everyone know also. So, May 1st was 2014 was the first, first, or when we were able to open up for grant writing. So, I applied for some backpack leaf blowers from Bill Implements in the amount of $736 and was approved for that. So, with that being said, I'd like to present the mayor and, I believe, it'd be Cole, the auditor of this check for the Port Clinton Elks, Ohio Elks Association, for $736 to go for the purchase of a couple backpack leaf blowers.
Really want to thank the Elks, all the support of the city.
All right. That's all I have for the day. We'll see you tomorrow.
And then Chief, do you want to go ahead with your presentation?
I can give a part of my, because he's not going to be able to make it, I can just give a part of my report.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. As everyone knows, or should know, we just had this --
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I promised the 4th of July and I forgot.
Well, that's important.
Yes. I had this little --
I have no problem saying that, yes.
I forgot, but Mike has waved it up to me, so go.
Thank you, Madam President. May I make the excuse from the table?
You may.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could I have the other committee members that are, that are here this evening come on up? Here. You know, back in 1776, John Adams, not the Boston Lager guy, the president guy, wrote a letter to his wife, a pretty famous letter that, in a synopsis, said, "For continuing generations, Independence Day would be celebrated with schwees and bonfires and illuminations and parties and music." Well, I'm not really sure what a schwee is, and I've asked Chief Johnson, he won't let me start anything on fire, so we're not going to have a bonfire. But I think our, our committee has put together a full day's worth of activities and, and with us today are a couple of the committee members, they couldn't all be here. You'll see these flyers all throughout town, going out, describing the activities taking place on the, on the 4th of July, and everything will take place on the 4th. We're going to start off the day with the Star Spangled Squirt Gun Run-Walk 5K, or something like that. And, and you've been, you've been working hard to put this together.
Yeah, kind of a long name, but simply a 5K through Port Clinton, but it's a special one, because we have people along the route to squirt the racers as they go by. And this is our second annual, we did this last year. So, registration will start at 8:00 AM at the Blue Pavilion on Jefferson Street, and the race will start at 9:00. The race will be going down Perry Street to Buckeye and coming back up State and Third Street to Adams Street Park. And we invite the community to come out and help us squirt the runners as they go by, even if you're not going to be in the race. And you can sign up online at squirtgunrun.com, and if you sign up by Friday, which is June 27th, you are guaranteed a tee-shirt. So, we encourage you to register early.
And your packet also has a signup sheet, if anyone in here is interested in signing up for the Run-Walk. Continuing then on, on, in the afternoon at 3:00 PM at Trinity United Methodist Church, we have the ever-popular Firecracker Cutie Contest, which is open from ages zero up to 10. Applications are again in your packet, they're also available at Perfect Color Hair and Tan, Mary's Blossom Shop, also on the Facebook page, Port Clinton Area, 4TH, 4TH of July Celebration. It should be a fun event at Trinity United Methodist Church. Also running from 3:00 up until 8:00 PM at Trinity is the Ice Cream Social, Ice Cream Hot Dog and Apple Pie Social. Get your hot dogs, apple pie, ice cream all American-type fare. That'll run throughout the entire day from, from 3:00 up until 8:00 PM. And then from 3:00 to 7:00 is a Classic Car Show, and Debbie Kestner's going to tell us all about the Classic Car Show.
Yes, we're having, on the 200 block of Adams Street, we'll, we have about 40 applicants so far, and the first 100, they get a little plaque to put in their, display of their car, and all the door prizes throughout the community. Kenny Holcomb and I went and got some and show up. We have some DJ music, the 50s, 60s, and who's our DJ?
DJ is Brock Ryder.
Brock.
There's also an application, if you have a classic car in your, your packet, these are also available on the website, or on the Facebook page, or by Tom Tax and Debbie, she'll get you those. And they've been doing a wonderful job, it's going to be a neat addition to the 4th of July festivities. Continuing that on later in the evening at 7:00 PM, this is the second year we've had the Voices of Freedom Concert. This will be a community choir that will also take place at Trinity United Methodist Church. Rick is, is participating in that, and I had the opportunity to rehearse every Wednesday evening, I had the opportunity to go listen last Wednesday, and I was there for about 45 minutes, just absolutely amazing sound, patriotic and all sorts of, of music, so keep up. That's being conducted by Greg Fox, the former high school vocal conductor. And then continuing on to the evening, moving over to Waterworks Park, we have the, Port Clinton Radio dot com is sponsoring the Family Dance Party, which begins at 8:00 and goes all the way up to the fireworks, and then of course at 10:00 PM in the traditional location, will be the fireworks celebration. Music will be choreographed and be able to be heard in, in Waterworks Park. Now, for, for years now, the, the 4th of July Committee has tried to honor and recognize an individual in our community as a hometown hero, someone who has contributed their entire life, not only to the city of Port Clinton, but to the country and, and the concept of, of independence. And our hometown hero this evening just walked through the door. Deb, you want to introduce our hometown hero?
Yes. Henry Wilson, would you please come up here? I'll meet you halfway, I'll be back. Henry was our nominee for our committee, was voted unanimously to be our hometown hero. He was born in Cleveland, and he joined the United States Maritime in March 15th, 1943. And he was an ordinary seaman on the SS David Thompson on the Great Lakes. And from June 1943 to Christmas 1943, he was an ordinary seaman aboard the SS Powell, the new Liberty ship, which sailed through Baltimore, through the Mediterranean, Suez Canal, Indian Ocean, the Persian Gulf, Iran and Iraq, and encountered enemy planes in the Mediterranean, enemy submarines in the Indian Ocean. He went on to school on a couple more ships, the SS John Lawson, he carried troops, light equipment, ammunition, to Africa from the course of Italy, beachheads to the invasion of South France, and took German prisoners from South France to North Africa, and where they left them, about 1,500, I think, German prisoners back to the United States. And in 19, December 1944 to November 1945, he was in Officer Candidate School in Fort Trummell, New London, Connecticut. And in March of 1945, he aborted the SS George Brown and sailed from Boston to Newfoundland, and he was in a North Atlantic storm. Was pretty treacherous?
It was a dandy.
It was a dandy. Okay. And in June, in 1945, Germany surrendered, and in August 1945, Japan surrendered. And in August of 1945, he was then drafted by the United States Army and sent six months in Fort Knox. And in 1946, he was attached to the 10th Corporate 7th Infantry Division, 750th Tank Battalion in Korea. Did I get that right?
Right.
Okay. And while he was there, it was not all that business, but he was a part-time prison guard, and he did play football for the 7th Division. And in January of 1947, he was discharged. He joined his family then in their new home in Mylan, and then he toured the country for, the world, actually. And he then went back to Mylan and married the first lady that he met and met this lovely wife there. So, thank you for serving our country and being our hometown hero.
I live in Port Clinton because I want to. I came here because I wanted to. And to stay here is long, is God willing.
Thank you. Thank you. All day long, he and his wife will be treated to special seating at the concerts, and we'll try to get you into a classic car perhaps, and go about 70 down Perry Street. Special seating for the fireworks, so it should, it's your day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now I can ask you a question.
Are you sure?
I think so.
Okay, so make sure. Started out talking about the Special Olympics that just happened this past week, and I wanted to give a lot of special thanks to our Police Department, ODNR, Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Department, the FOPA, which is a new organization supporting law enforcement out of county, and some of the councilmen. We appreciate not all the councilmen can make it, but, you know, as life has it, we don't always have the opportunity. But I wanted to thank all those folks who attended and helped and supported, and especially the people along the route that were graceful enough to step out and applaud our athletes. Also, back on the 11th, a lot of you know, June 11th, on Wednesday, we had a wonderful announcement that came to Port Clinton, $2.35 million to work on Madison Street. And I just wanted to make sure that I showed my appreciation, or expressed my appreciation to council. You know, it's great that America gets some credit for these things, but in all reality, it takes a team to move anything forward, and I'm very grateful for everyone at this table who moved forward with us, was part of the committees, along with Main Street Chamber, all these members, community members that got together to really make this possible. There's no one person more important than the others. My hat's off to all of you, and all your support. And you know what, with that, I'm done.
Auditors' report.
So thanks to the fellow companions tonight.
Treasurers' report. Madam President, my report was fleshed out for my -- Law Directors' report. Safety Service Directors' report.
Just very quick, Madam President. I just wanted to announce, you met Eric Peterson tonight again. He's in charge of the Water Department now. Eric's strictly doing the water. We have a new gentleman, Scott Haberman, with us that is the Street Department Supervisor, so I'm going to let everybody know that. Scott will be handling all the day-to-day stuff and all the other stuff besides water. Eric will be in charge of water, and he's taking care of the GIS systems for us. Other than that, have a great safe and happy import. You're right. Thank you.
Police Chiefs' report.
Thank you, Madam President. Our award recipient wasn't able to attend tonight, but we're giving out the 2013 Myron Dress Award. The Myron Mike Dress Award was instituted by the department to recognize individual officers who have had an outstanding year. This award is given based on felony arrests. Of those, there are burglaries in progress, narcotics arrests, and recovered stolen vehicles. This award is in remembrance of Myron Mike Dress, who was a member of the Port Clinton Reserve Police and passed away after a short battle with cancer. Mike was a composite of a police officer, as he was caring, professional, and always there when called upon. We continue to honor his memory, his service, and his compassion by recognizing individual officers with this award. In 2013, officers accumulated a combined total of 20 lightning bolts being awarded departmentally. Six of those for burglaries in progress, 13 narcotic felony arrests, and one stolen vehicle. The recipient for 2013 Myron Dress Award is Patrolman Nathan Edmonds. Nate was hired in December 2007 as a civilian dispatcher and reserve police officer, and later promoted to the rank of patrolman in June of 2012. Nate is currently assigned to the afternoon shift, and Nate is one of our two backup detectives. Patrolman Edmonds, that would be Nate, not Ralph, that's his dad, exhibits all the attributes that make him the kind of officer that Mike Dress was, and the department is very proud of him. So, I would like to present, and I will, the 2013 Myron Dress Award to Patrolman Nathan Edmonds, Port Clinton Police Department.
I have a couple of things this evening. First thing is, is today started our annual Safety Town, Port Clinton Safety Town. For those of you that don't know what that is, is for years, we have had children come in, and they are pre-kindergarten, and we run them through a week of safety. Today was Police Day, tomorrow is Fire Day, Thursday is EMS and ODNR Day, Friday, we throw them on a school bus, and take them to the schools, teach them how to ride a school bus, get on and off. We just have a great time. Got 26 kids there, might have 27 tomorrow, we had one we were short, but it's, it's a very big pleasure. We've been doing this for a number of years. It's always good to see, we have got actually kids there that their parents went through it, and they still remember that. So, I want to thank Mr. Jerry Trolle, and he said, "What can I do to help?" He was a wrangler today. I got to admit, all 26 kids were fantastic, and they did a great job, not a lot of wrangling, but anybody wants to come down and play, they more than welcome. The other thing that I've got for, I want to share a story with you. On Father's Day, I, I run a lot of private fire calls, and I've shared this with a couple councilmen, I've shared it with my fire department. But I run a lot of private fire calls, and what I call that, instead of tonying our entire fire department, I'll, I'll go out and take care of them by myself. I had a call for a CO alarm in the middle of the afternoon, we had just started up the grill, was going to sit down Father's Day at the kids and the grandkids and stuff, so I took the call. And I went to this individual's home, and she had an alarm beeping. Well, to make a long story short, she didn't call me for the alarm. She called me because she had no one. Her husband had died Thursday. She was in process of dealing with that, she had lost her son early in the year, she's, I'm not going to mention any names, she's 82 years old. And just to make, just to make it all, you don't realize how many people in our town we have like this. I've added this lady to my list, some of you know, I've got a couple that I go out and take care of, and I make sure that they're eating, and I make sure that they're drinking. But take the time and look around your neighborhood, and see if there's somebody there. They just go unnoticed. The two worst inventions in the world that were made was the privacy fence and the garage door. Take the time, stand out in your front yard, and look around and see who's beside you, and who just might need to say, "Hey, have you ate today? Hey, do you need anything from the store?" Or, "Hey, how is your day going?" But take it, and everybody go out and take that home with you. This lady here, I stopped by and saw her yesterday afternoon, and she had watermelon ready for me. So, you know what that means, I know she's eating, but she hadn't ate three or four days, she was in mourning, and it was, it did, it genuinely touched me. I went through that with my mother, I went going through it with another, a very dear friend of ours at council, she's going through some hard times, and I just make sure they're okay. But go home tonight, look in your neighborhood and see what's there. And let's pay it forward, because someday, we're going to need it. I'm just hoping I'm good enough that somebody's going to do it for me. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, under correspondence, I, and I actually, I sent you all an email, so just put this on your calendars, we've got an invitation to the National Rifle Matches. It's July 7th, the, the band concert starts at 9:30, the first shot ceremony starts at 10:00. The person that's firing the first shot is Mr. Gary Anderson, who was in charge of CMP for many years, and is now retired. At one time in his life, he was an Olympian, and if you've never gone to the first shot, I think it's an interesting thing to, to go to, it's not a long ceremony, the first shot individual will give a small speech, but there's all these honorees there. Then afterwards, they're dedicating the new training center to Gary, and then also there will be a breakfast at the Pub House afterwards, so, which you can attend, but if you get the opportunity, go, it's Monday, July 7th, again, starts at 9:30, wonderful band. They end the, they end the concert every year by playing all the different organizations, the Marine March, the Army, they do them all, and then whoever's in the audience, all the group, stand up, all the Army guys stand up, and it's just, it's just a nice thing to watch. And it's a good thing for us to go to, if we remember in the back of our heads, NRA and the Civilian Marks and Chip Program bring in a lot of dollars in the month of July with the National Rifle Matches going on and the Civilian Marks Matches going on. Are you going to shoot this year?
Yeah, actually have a little competition going on with the chief, but I think he was so nervous that he passed it over to Jerry Trolle. But still on, and you have my full support. There you go. Bring your check, please.
So, if you get an opportunity, if you don't happen to make it to the first shot ceremony, you can go out there anytime, the matches are going on, just walk around and take a look at what's going on in our community. Also, I have from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, this is a new permit, it's the West Dock Inc., doing business as BODA, on 315 West Lake Shore Drive. Wait, I'm making a mistake. Oh, the stock is owned by Dalton Graham. I just wanted to give you a little information. Okay.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion that we waive our right to object to that amendment.
I have a motion to waive our rights to object to the permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolle, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I now need a motion to accept the correspondence as stated, and including the Finance Committee minutes of 617 and the Treasurers' report. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have another piece of correspondence. This is from the Ohio County Veteran Service Office, it's from Sarah Torres, and she would like to start a Reef Across America program. I know they did that out in the town cemetery this December, they'd like to see all cemeteries in Ohio County doing that, and I have put this in Mr. Trolle's, so we could accept that also. So, now I'll take the motion to accept all the correspondence. Thank you, Mr. Trolle, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Phillips, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now go to reading of ordinances and resolutions, we have a third reading, so we'll go to the second readings with the clerk please read by Title 1 summary only, ordinance 14-14.
Ordinance 14-14, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to advertise permits and enter into contracts for the relining of the sanitary sewer for Fulton Street from Fourth Street to Southern Street, and Maple Street from Perry Street to Second Street, and declaring emergency.
Does council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 14-14? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Madam President, I would like to make a motion that we waive the three required readings.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on ordinance 14-14, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Trolle, any discussion on the waiving of the readings? Seeing then, will the court please call the roll? Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Thank you, does council wish to take any further action on ordinance 14-14? Mrs. Sardi? I have a motion to retain the emergency clause of ordinance 14-14, do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Difridas, any discussion? Will the court please call the roll? Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you, does council wish to take any further action on ordinance 14-14? Mr. Snyder?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the emergency clause.
I have a motion to adopt ordinance 14-14, do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Difridas, any discussion? Will the court please call the roll? Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you, ordinance 14-14 has passed. At the June 10th meeting, we passed a resolution, Resolution 14-03. As the clerk went to enter this into the book, we already had Resolution 14-03, we need to change the number, so I am asking for, for a motion to conform to the numbering system and change the resolution to Resolution 14-04.
So, Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. Snyder, could I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi, any discussion? The court please call the roll. Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you, Resolution 14-03 is now 14-04. Thank you. We will now go to business from the floor, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, congratulations to everyone that participated in the, in getting the grant for downtown, that's a wonderful thing, and in conjunction with that, the members of council were presented with an inch and a half thick revitalization plan for downtown Port Clinton, and at this time, I'd like to make a motion that, that we adopt that revitalization plan.
I have a motion to adopt a revitalization plan that you've all received. Do I have a second?
Oh, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Trolle, any discussion? Seagull, will the court please call the roll? Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Thank you, the plan has been accepted. Mike, something? Anything else?
Yes, Madam President, I have a statement to read real, real quickly, I have, okay. Soon, the Finance Committee will meet to begin the process of reviewing Mayor Leon's 2015 budget proposal. This act is just one of a few codified by state statute as a responsibility of the members of city council. As such, we all take this obligation extremely seriously. Planning for the financial needs of the community for the entire year is not an easy act. As we all know, snowstorms, broken water lines, a spike in criminal activity, and countless other unforeseen demands on our limited resources play havoc with a well-thought-out and well-organized budget. We all realize that discretionary funds in the budget as tight of ours are quite limited. As a matter of fact, we estimate that discretionary funds make up less than 6.5% of the overall $3.3 million general fund for 2014. However, demands far outweigh the available funds. Consequently, the decisions we make today on how and where we properly allocate these dollars could have a dramatic impact 12, 15, and 18 months into the future. It is for this reason that the Finance Committee It is for this reason that the Finance Committee would like to announce, would like to ask for the citizens of Port Clinton to give us their input on this particular topic. The Finance Committee will be conducting a series of public hearings on Thursday, July 17, in this council chambers, to give you the opportunity, to give you the opportunity to demonstrate to us where you believe these discretionary funds should be allocated. Now, the general fund is divided into 17 subcategories. Members of the community will be given the opportunity to speak on the discretionary funds found in these subcategories during that time slot on July 17. The times and general fund subcategories' schedule is as follows. At 4:00 PM, Recreation and Cemetery. At 5:00 PM, Ottawa County Deductions, Civil Service, Transfers, Parking Lot, Senior Center, and Planning Commission. At 6:00 PM, Council, Mayor, Auditor, Treasurer, and Law Director. At 7:00 PM, City Hall, Administration, Safety Service, and at 8:00 PM, the Police Fund. Individuals choosing to make a presentation to the Finance Committee will be asked to sign, sign in prior to the scheduled time slot, and will be allotted time based on the number of individuals or groups signed up for that given time period. Now, this is not intended to be a question-and-answer session for specific expenditures and the line items of each budget. This is your opportunity to tell us about your vision for the city of Port Clinton. Copies of the 2014 budget are available by contacting the city auditor. Call Hatfield at 419-734-5522, and simply follow the appropriate prompts. That?
Thank you. Mrs. Sardi? I'd just like to say congratulations on the grant, Mike. There's a good thing. It's nice to be able to go downtown and see, they can't hear. It's nice to be able to go downtown and see most of the businesses. There's just a couple buildings that are empty. There's been a lot of green openings and rooting cuttings. It's good to see Port Clinton moving forward and growing. Thank you. Mr. Bealow?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to start by congratulating the administration for successfully securing the small grants, or small, not a small grant, small cities grant for downtown. That's a big win for the city, so good job. At the June 3rd Planning and Development Committee meeting, we discussed different economic development tools for downtown, and specifically the Community Reinvestment Area, or CRA. So, work continues on that draft legislation, which was prepared by Mr. Hatfield. The next committee meeting will be July 1st at 5:30 here at City Hall. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Trowley?
Yeah, just a couple of things. My congratulations also to the administration for downtown revitalization work. It's going to be phenomenal. A big, a big event. Like the mayor said, Sunday was the Special Olympics torch run, and I was fortunate enough to be able to attend and talk about heartwarming. It just, you know, we all complain about our little aches and pains, and to see these young people just give their all out there, it just, I don't know, it just really, really touches me. It really does. And a note to Chief Johnson, my grandson will be there tomorrow, so just to let you know, you got a runner. Just kidding. You're the wrangler. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Difridis?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that the infrastructure meeting will be canceled on July 1st, and it is on the map.
Ms. Phillips?
This is what we voted on tonight, 168 pages of facts. Great work for somebody. It really was quite, quite good, actually. I read it, honestly, force of habit. Excellent. But I really like this, because this deals with the Fourth of July. Mike and your two committee should be congratulated, because there's no dead time on here. Nobody can say, "I have nothing to do." They can find something somewhere. All right? Thank you.
And have committee be informed to talk about changes in the structure of the council meeting, and we are having our first meeting tomorrow night at 5:00 PM at TTH Enterprises. So, it'll be at my office, actually. So, and members of the committee are Mr. Snyder, Mr. Ackerman, and Ms. Phillips, and Mr. Holbert and myself. Five o'clock tomorrow. Members of the audience. Mr. Yonk?
Mr. Yonk, 117 Cedar Street. Mr. Snyder, will that report be made available to the public?
I believe it's in the public record.
Who do you have to see to get a copy of it or a look see?
For that to...
Just go through the whole process, and you can talk to Jim Horner, see if he's happy to provide you a copy or email. Cool. Thanks, man.
She can send it out by email, but some people had some trouble downloading it.
It's huge.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, 180, 180 pages, was it, or something like that?
Yeah, so some of us had a little problem, so up to you. I mean, you can try it that way, but...
Well, it's got a lot of pictures in there. That uses some... All right, good. Thank you.
Mr. Finney?
Don Finney, 222 Adams Street. Mr. Hatfield, were you able to research that?
I have done some preliminary research, but I haven't been able to put together a grand total, so hopefully by next council meeting, I'll have a grand total.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Something happened last week at council meeting that's kind of disturbing. On voting on an issue, the, Madam President, you told some council members how to vote.
I don't remember that issue, but...
You said on the first question, it's positive, and the next question, it's negative, or something like that.
Would help if you were a little more specific.
Well, I'm just telling you, you told there was an issue on the floor, whether it was emergency or whatever, but you suggested the council members how to vote.
Well, if you could bring the specific case to me, I'll discuss it with you. Up till then, I don't know what you're talking about, so...
I'm sure it's on tape.
I'm sure it is.
It was quite disturbing, I think.
Anyone else this evening? Mr. Noder?
Rick Noder, 608 East Perry. I was wondering, from what organization or entity did the Downtown Revitalization Grant come?
I'm sorry?
From what organization or entity did the Downtown Revitalization Grant come from?
The grant itself came from ODOT. Small cities.
Small cities grant? Is that what they're doing? Okay. Were there any matching funds or requirements?
There are other matching funds that are through the water and sewer fund, but we are also trying to secure other grants through G or PWC. Those are already in motion, but we have not received those as of yet.
What are the requirements?
Which one? Every, every grant entity has a different specification of what they need. I don't know those off the top of my head, but what are you looking for?
The grant specifies that each one of those has...
Covers a certain thing.
Ah, okay. But there was no, there was no lump sum that...
There's the 2.3 that you, the 2.35 that came from ODOT, that would be more specific to storm sewers, sidewalks, streets.
Okay.
And then, you know, obviously, we're applying for PWC, which gets in the water and sewer. Like you say, each one is specific, and each one has specific needs that we have to comply with.
Okay, but the grant that was obtained, is there a lump sum matching requirement for that?
Off the top of my head, I can't give you that. They supply 80%. So, another 20%.
80%.
Yeah. The total project's $3.5 million. But like you say, there's other grants that are in the works right now, so that's going to change dramatically, because we're trying to overlap those grants, take up the match. Does that make, I'm trying to clarify a question.
But basically, a 20% match, then?
Basically.
Okay.
What are you looking for?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Just want to make sure I was answering your question.
Yeah, I'd also, I'd also like to say that, make a personal comment, and that is that I think the city has been doing a great job of leveraging grants, and I think the auditor probably has a lot to do with that, I'm guessing, and I think a great job is being done.
Thank you.
And just one more, and I think the mural area, the Friendship Park downtown, what it improved, that's really, it's very, very nice.
We're grateful for the yard council, for the report on that project.
Anyone else this evening?
Roger Smith, 28, Team West Forest Street. I want to thank our safety director for coming out and explaining to my father why there was a yard problem there. There is an east and a west. I want to make sure the fire chief and the police chief know the difference. I don't want no kicking into the doors that it's east or west. We've been to your house, Ron.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. I would wish everyone a happy fourth. I don't have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Phillips.